Greetings from on public safety. And this is your opportunity if you have any questions you want to ask other chiefs. If, as they make their presentation, I think feel free to do that. With that, who's going to go first?
Okay, I can start. My name's Eric Walburn, Deputy Chief. You didn't ask for a PowerPoint, so I'm just going off some basic notes that I've collected as highlights to this point of the year from fire's perspective. Currently, from August of this year, January to August of this year, we've ran over 9,000 calls. We're on pace to reach about 14,000 calls by the end of the year, which is a little more than where we were at last year. Last year's total was about 13,800. And each year, we've gone up in our call volume, so this is predictable. The types of calls that we've been responding to are also consistent as far as the percentages go. We still continue to run about 75 percent of our calls are emergency medical calls for service. And then the other categories that we capture in our statistical reporting include fire, explosions, hazardous materials, service calls, false alarms, and other types of incidents like weather and those types of things.
I'm assuming that you haven't had any explosions this year?
Yeah, we've had about 137 explosions this year already, so we do capture those as statistical information.
What, I guess I'm kind of curious. What occupies an explosion because?
Sometimes cylinders that are on, have some propane cylinders, gas cylinders, those types of things are considered an explosive type of incident that we've responded to. I can look a little bit farther into those and get some more detail for you if you'd like. I don't have that with me right now.
Yeah.
Transformers are not uncommon. Transformers to, and then where you get the power outages. So that's an example. Again, I can research some more detailed information.
I think the problem is, is when you say explosions, we're thinking somebody's blowing something up versus a propane tank going off.
No, I didn't mean to imply that, but yes, those are some of the types of calls as it relates to that type of incident.
Unless somebody else is interested in a further follow-up on that. I personally am not now that I, but when you're talking about explosions in this day and age, you're kind of like, whoa, you kind of got my attention.
Yeah, I'll look a little bit deeper into it and see if I can get you some more definite information.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Eric, what percentage did you say again was the medical responses?
We average about 75 percent of our emergency medical calls each year are EMS.
75 percent of the responses of the year-to-date 9K?
Of our total call volume is EMS.
Got it.
And again, just in summary, we're on pace to get to about 14,000 calls, which is more than what we ran last year.
13K last year.
One of the other statistical information that we capture is our average response time. We're at about 5 minutes and 14 seconds to date. Our 90 percent fractile is about 7 minutes and 29 seconds. One of the things we started collecting this year was because we get a significant amount of requests for public relations events, being present at those. Some of those may include homeowners associations, neighborhood groups, some other types of events that are going on in the city. Cub Scouts want to come by and do visits of our fire stations. Families want to come by and do visits of our stations. So we've started capturing how many of those we're actually facilitating during the year. And to date, we've got about 75 of those requests, and we'll be monitoring that to see exactly what we can accommodate and what we can't for future planning purposes.
Question, Eric?
Yeah?
Does that include the neighborhood picnics or not?
It doesn't because usually the neighborhood picnics are already organized by the city. These are special requests that come through my office for a fire engine to come visit or those types of things. Preschools are another good example. They want to come by and see the firefighter, learn a little bit about public safety or fire safety, and so we try to accommodate every request that we possibly can. The only time we don't is if the engine company is dispatched to an emergency response during that timeframe, and then we'll try and reschedule. But we make every opportunity to try and accommodate those requests.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Do you, are you pretty successful in accommodating most of those requests?
I would say almost 100 percent.
Oh, good.
It's very rare that we have to cancel because we're on an emergency response, but like I said, we would come back and make contact with those, whoever the requister was, and then try and reschedule.
Good, good, good.
One of the things we talked about in earlier meetings with public safety was succession planning. A third of our departments at age 50 or older, and we knew that we're going to be having a lot of retirements in the upcoming years, as well as hiring new members to the fire department. This year, we had 13 retirements. Along with that came 13 promotions. We had new members coming into new positions that they currently didn't hold before. So our department is definitely in transition. We also hired 14 new firefighters, so we've been sending them through the fire academy and getting them on the street once they've been trained to do their job. And six of those positions were through the SAFRA grant that the city council approved. And there currently, we have four at the fire academy right now, so that would be our latest new hires that we've been able to add to our fours.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Eric, out of these 14 hires, how many of them are people of color?
Well, looking at the list, I can't say for sure. We do have one female, but as far as members of color, I don't believe we have one of the 14.
We did not hire one out of the 14?
Correct.
Okay.
The last item I had were just significant or noteworthy calls to this point, and probably the biggest one, which you guys are aware of, was the five alarm fire that we had most recently. We do capture this information for national statistical reporting purposes. This one was significant, and you guys have been briefed on this. I just wanted to mention that this was one that exceeded our capabilities from our own resources. It did, it was five alarms, did bring firefighters, about 150 firefighters from three counties into the city of Renton. And as a result of that, we recognized that all of the training we've been doing up to this point over the years, all of the policies that have been put into place, all the things that we've done to prepare for this actually turned out with a great success, successful This fire that was in Renton will probably allow us to make some more revisions because there were some lessons learned as this, especially in our communications portion to our customer. So Dev Needham has been currently working on ways that we can better inform our customers in the event evacuations, things like that. So that was an outcome that we determined will help us in the future if this event were to happen again. That's all I had unless you had some questions for me.
Any other questions for the fire department? I mean, how are, with the four firefighters that are in the academy, are you up to full strength or?
Yes. We currently have every position filled in our budget.
Good.
Good afternoon. Kevin Maloffus, Police Chief. I have a couple of items to discuss tonight. One, at the request of Councilwoman Person, was the status of the Puget Sound Emergency Radio Project. Then the other is a kind of an overview of some of our department budget and staffing issues we're kind of temporarily going through. First of all, the Puget Sound Emergency Radio Network. This is something that Laura Yuland, who's the Director of ValleyCom, is on, is on the, heavily involved in this process. She's on the steering committee, so I have, for the most part, her notes of where we're at with that project. First of all, the goal of this project is to implement a new 800 megahertz emergency radio system in King County. Parties involved include King County, who is the lead of this project, the city of Seattle, Valley Communications, Eastside Public Safety Communications, and the steering committee consists of representatives from modelized agencies and, like I said, Laura Yuland from ValleyCom. The estimated cost of this project is $250 million, and I'll kind of give you a status of where we are. Regarding governance, according to Laura, we're behind schedule. The steering committee tentatively agreed to a formation of a nonprofit agency to own, operate, and maintain the new radio system, and this requires two different interlocal agreements to be crafted. One is to govern the implementation phase, and this is where King County is the lead on crafting this ILA, which specifies the creation of a joint board consisting of the steering committee representatives and deals with the transfer of assets and ownership to the new entity upon final system acceptance. The second ILA is to create a new entity to own, operate, and maintain this radio system. It details governance, powers, responsibilities, and city attorneys from each ValleyCom city is involved. I believe Zanatta is representing the city of Renton. This governance is to be modeled after the ValleyCom structure. ValleyCom owner city attorneys are taking the lead on crafting this second ILA. They have met three times to craft it, and they scheduled a meeting with all 12 city attorneys later this month to finalize the document. The completion date for these interlocal agreements is October 31, 2014. This is in order for it to be transmitted with the funding measure to the King County Council. The consequence of not meeting this date is missing the potential April 2015 ballot for this initiative.
Kevin?
Yes.
When you say the transfer of assets, does that mean like the ValleyCom building that we're paying for?
No.
No, just the?
I think it's the equipment and everything that goes into the system. I don't think it's the building.
So they would just control the equipment. We would continue to operate ValleyCom?
Right. Currently, like the 800 megahertz system that was passed about, I think, 15 years ago is kind of the similar model.
Okay.
The next topic is the system vendor procurement. According to Laura, that's a potential problem. King County is the lead negotiator with the system vendor, with partner representatives assisting, and the negotiations have been slow. And the target date of this completion is November 1st of 2014. The site development is on schedule. They've hired an architectural and engineering consultant, and procurement is underway, and this consultant will assist in the site development for the new towers. And the target date of this completion is September 25th, 2014. Now, the biggest issue is the ballot measure. There's some analysis that was done at various options by King County determined a nine-year levied lid lift is the preferred funding measure. There have been considerable objections by junior taxing authorities like fire districts and fire authorities due to impacts of a levied lid lift would have on them. The risk is a failed measure, should the fire agencies not support or actively oppose the measure. King County Executive's Office has verbally promised protection and is crafting the language to support. The King County Council has stated they will not consider a ballot measure unless governance is known. For this reason, the ILAs must be drafted in assurance of support from all the parties involved. It is doubtful enough time exists to craft the ILAs and go through 11 city council processes plus the King County Council, so there is some potential risk. So overall, the risk of the project is that no agreement on governance, missed deadlines needed for ballot measures, system vendor negotiations breakdown, fire agencies do not support the ballot measure, and in the end, the voters don't support the ballot measure. So there's a lot of irons in the fire that need to be worked out in a very short timeframe. And one of the impacts of not meeting this timeframe is that it will increase the time the current system must remain viable. Minor support of various components of this system will end by 2018, and some are already out of support. Just this last weekend, I got an update from Laura of kind of where we are. She's been asked by the ValleyCom Administrative Board, which is the mayor's, to convene all the mayors and city managers from the Eastside Agencies, Seattle, King County, and ValleyCom to really try to make it a significant priority to move forward. The King County Prosecuting Attorney, who's leading the development of the first ILA, has sent a draft around and is currently scheduling a meeting with other city attorneys to review the draft. And then county is working to find a solution that satisfies the fire district authorities who may be impacted by a levied lid lift. My understanding, that is probably the most critical part from sitting at ValleyCom meetings because as a junior taxing district, I'm sure the mayor or Jay can talk a little more eloquently of how that impacts them because they have to stand in line for the limited amount of money out there. And so the last I heard, at least from a couple of different fire district chiefs, is they will actively oppose this if it impacts them.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah?
Chief, can you expand a little bit on the reasons why the fire services, the chiefs oppose the ILA and maybe a little bit on the lack of community support as well?
I'd probably defer to Jay on this one, on the whole concept of the junior taxing authority and how the levied lid lift impacts the fire districts and the fire authorities.
We've had a couple of experiences in this area of that where just the way the state structures taxing districts and how those are laid out, depending upon the levy and the jurisdiction, it can have an effect on district, fire districts who are considered junior taxing districts. So you might recall, Hospital District had to deal with that when they were looking at a levy increase and some of the negative impacts had on some of the districts. So I think they're trying to?
Specifically, what are those negative impacts?
Oh, they can't collect as much. So a taxing district might be a dollar levy or a dollar fifty levy, and this would actually reduce their levy.
Okay. Competing resources.
Right.
So if I could follow up, just, I'm trying to remember as well. So if we do, if a levy lid lift in one area, just, there's some maximum that can be collected, is that right? And so if some jurisdiction steps out and tries to take more, then you're saying that that's less for everybody else?
Correct. Actually, the legislature over the years, because of valuations historically have, in certain, you know, times of economic prosperity, have increased faster than levy rates. Say you end up with excess capacity, and so, which is why you can go out and do a levy lid lift. So your rate actually goes down because your overall valuation increases at a higher rate. We've experienced that. You know, we were 310, and now our rate is actually below 310. So what happens in the past is the legislature has gone out and approved taxing jurisdictions and kind of slotted them in that capacity. And that works in less than until everybody goes up to their legally allowed capacity. And then in that case, there's, we bump up against the overall rate lift. And so that's what we talk about when we talk about people, junior taxing districts getting impacted. As long as the economy grows and valuations improve at greater than, certainly greater than 1 percent, which is what most of our levies increase by or less, you end up creating that capacity, so it's not an issue. But it has been in the past and could be again. That's what I think the fire districts are concerned about.
Okay, good. Thanks.
Thank you. And what would be the community's pushback about support?
I think what I said, I think the issue is if the fire districts aren't supporting it because of the levied lid lift, then I think I would presume the citizens would call into question the support.
Wouldn't though they be kind of shooting themselves in one foot or the other if that doesn't go because the reason that we're looking at new radio system is because this old, the old system is not going to be supported by Motorola in the future?
I would agree, but it's on the fire side of the house, and so I'm kind of out of my realm here.
I mean, I'm just saying, the reason, if I, I want to be sure that I understand the reason. The reason that we're going through this exercise is that Motorola, when they sold us the first 800 frequency years ago, have now decided that they're not going to support that. It's kind of like computer software. So then your system goes bad, or you need more radios, and they're not going to produce radios and that, which is forcing this issue. So it could be kind of a very dangerous thing if we don't come to some kind of agreement on this because we need to upgrade the radio system.
What Linda knows, I have, I think it's, it competes with their ability to just bring in their normal amount of resources, that they could potentially bring in less resources for their fire district in exchange for this radio network.
Mr. Chair? But I recall that years ago when I was Chair of Public Safety, and we were having these same conversations. But as you stated, doesn't the upgrading of that system works towards the benefit of law enforcement and fire? Is that not correct?
Yes.
In terms of making it easier for them to do their jobs?
Yes.
So we need to make a better case of this, I suppose.
Or those junior taxing districts that don't want to enter into it don't get new radios. Let them deal with the old ones.
I know, just as we experienced with Hospital years ago, there's, there are solutions that can hopefully be satisfactory to the junior taxing districts as well as to the rest of us that obviously recognize the value of this system, and as do they. I think they're just trying to figure out a way that they can continue to operate as well. So these are details that need to be worked out, and I think everybody is trying to figure out a way to make that happen.
Topic number two, which I have much better handle on, on what's going on, and that's the status of our budget and staffing within the police department. Each of you, I'm sure, got the report from finance, kind of gives an overview of the city and each department, and it shows the police department with about a $10,000 over budget as of the end of July. While that's not a huge case of alarm, I'll kind of give you an overall explanation of kind of where we are. I think overall, if you look at our budget, our overtime line item is substantially spent over budget, and our regular salaries and benefits are under. And that has to do with our staffing shortages in the police department. So what's causing this? For the most part, last year, Sue Rohr, who's the Director of the Academy, sent a survey out to all the law enforcement in the state saying, how many officers and deputies do you expect to retire in 2014 and '14, so she can plan accordingly for the number of academies? The responses came back, and she planned accordingly. And then with the economy coming back, officers are leaving left and right and across the state, including in our department. We've had officers retiring the last year or two that I wouldn't expect to retire. As a result, there is some substantial delays of academy because there are only about 13 scheduled academies. So basically, one new academy starts each month statewide. So what that means is, you know, two officers that I gave job offers back in April, we postponed their hiring dates till September 1, and they start, and they got into the October academy. I gave two job offers in July, and those two officers will start December 1 because I can't get them into the academy until January. And so meanwhile, we have minimum staffing to fill, and so we're spending a lot of overtime. We have three officers in field training right now. They just graduated from the academy in the last couple of months, and they'll be on their own in January. Currently, we have five officer vacancies. We're in the process of looking at backgrounds of both entry-level and lateral officers. We have three officers on light duty as a result of on-the-job injuries. So you put all these spots together, and that's 16 officers right now that aren't on their own for the most part. And so we're having a backfill with overtime. At the same time, we have three officers expected to go out on extended medical leave in the next six to eight weeks. So some of the decisions I've had to make and the impacts within the organization is we continue to authorize overtime to keep our minimum staffing in patrol around the clock. And this summer, as we all know, has been a great summer, and I kind of have a standing rule that any weekend when it's over 80 degrees, we're going to hire, if we're at minimum, we're going to hire officers on overtime to be in Jean Coulon because of the issues there. And we've done that all summer long, and it's been a great summer, and we haven't had any real issues at Coulon all summer long. We recently temporarily transferred six members from our special operations. That's our uniform proactive kind of wing of the department into patrol to add to staffing in patrol, to reduce our overtime expenditures. These are the officers who typically ride bike patrol and are pro-act throughout the year, and since, as summer's waning, it was time to move them back in patrol, spread them out in patrol, and so we can reduce our overtime costs. Staffing is short in every division. We've delayed promotions of a commander and two sergeants until we can get some of our staffing up to shape. Other vacancies in the department is a crime analyst and evidence technician. We're in the process of filling those positions. So as you roll this out, I think by January, we should be looking pretty good. I anticipate to be under budget because our overtime needs will go down through the fall because there won't be the needs and the pressure to fill spots at Jean Coulon. By transferring six members of special operations patrol, I think we're going to reduce some of the overtime needs there. So we're going to get healthy, and I think by January, you know, we're going to have several officers on their own. We should be able to hire a couple laterals between now and end of the year, and so probably by January, February, we should be able to move those officers back into special operations and then just wait for the hiring and the training. Because it's going to take some time because, you know, if it takes us three to four months to get in the academy, it takes five months to go in the academy, it takes four months in training. So right now, once I make a hiring decision, it's about a year until those officers are on their own. I understand the academy is trying to plan accordingly for more academies next year. However, at the same time, I received information today that the academy is under the same 15 percent cut that, my understanding, all Washington State agencies are looking at, and so they're having to plan accordingly. And so this issue may hap, may keep up for a little bit. As far as competition, every agency is short. Every agency is going after the same officers, the same laterals, and so it's very competitive out there. Right now, unless I'm really going to start losing some good candidates, I'm delaying the hiring because there's really nothing for us to do with a new officer for three to four months until we can get them in the academy. And so we're, we've been lucky so far. A lot of people are calling out the military we're hiring, and they're planning enough ahead that they sometimes they go into the active reserve for six months, and they can get out within two weeks' notice. And so that's kind of where we are.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Yes, Chief. I know you've done a stellar job in the city in terms of diversifying your force. As I recall, your department was right at around 20, 22 percent people of color. Have, in the last year in your hires, have you been able to add to that diversity?
Uh, no.
Any other questions? Is there any thought, or is it a possibility of us going together? Because I know this has been done in the past with other cities who are having the same problem of basically putting on our own academy. I realize it has to be certified through the state, but I can remember when they used, they did that before.
We've always had a Spokane academy, the Spokane Police Department, and they're going to have one academy this year, which will take off a little bit of pressure, especially from the Eastside Agencies. We've talked about it a little bit in the past. I think the last time that the Valley Chiefs got together was about four or five years ago, where we're in a similar phase and looking at the logistics and having to teach their It's pretty onus, you know? We would have to, you know, it's one of those things, if each Valley Agency had, you know, half a dozen officers or something like that, it might make sense and have to be a substantial amount of coordination, but, you know, we're hoping that the academy gets their full funding, and they can put on a handful of extra academies this next year. And look at laterals. And we're looking at maybe how we can advertise differently to get more out-of-state laterals. But you always got to be careful with laterals. You know, sometimes you just get another agency's problems. You really got to do your homework, so.
Mr. Chair, I like the idea of, you know, having our own academy. Mr. Chair, I like the idea of, you know, having our own academy because I think that gives us an opportunity of really looking inside of our own city and our high schools and our, you know, our colleges to try to refine candidates that we can recruit and bring onboard. What's the likelihood of something like that?
Well, currently, all our entry-level process is through publicsafetytesting.com, which tests applicants statewide on a standardized test. Currently, we're still with Public Safety Testing and so, all the names that we get for our entry-level process and the oral boards originate through publicsafetytesting.com.
That's a national organization?
It's a state, well, it started out in Washington, now they reach Oregon, Idaho, California, and I believe Alaska. Started actually by one of our former officers.
I would like it if we could point more inward. I'm aware that much of our hiring that we do, some of our agencies are bringing in people from outside of our state and we miss giving opportunities to our own homegrown populations. And so, we have disparity in terms of the number of people that can get these jobs here. So, I would be open to having conversations about how we can put more effort into considering that.
The five officers we've hired, I think all five are within the state. I believe three out of the five are military experience. We are looking at trying to recruitment fair down at JBLM because as the military's downsizing, it's a very diverse organization, we have been successful in the past. So, we're looking at a lot of different options.
And for those who don't know at home, JBLM is joint based Louis McCord.
I do.
Thank you, Chief.
Do you have any other thing to brief us on?
No, sir.
I just, how are we doing with home runs?
I think, overall status report, we're still working with the city's Attorney's Office. There has been communication between the city Attorney's Office and the owner. They are on our list. We are tracking calls for service and we're just in the process, I believe, of prepping for any kind of formal charges.
We sent a letter to the State Liquor Control Board a month or so ago recommending that their license not be renewed based on the high level of calls for service there and what we thought was a relative lack of responsiveness on their part when we tried to point out some things they do. We and the Liquor Control Board met with the owners, maybe it was over a month ago, I don't recall. I think the Liquor Control Board is going to be coming out with a recommendation and probably this week, I would think, if not already. I believe their license was set to expire the end of August, so I haven't heard, but we'll see what the Liquor Control Board does. But we, in the meantime, I know the city Attorney's Office is continuing to pursue prosecution of the violations that have occurred. Oh, speaking of...
I was hiding from Jay. He couldn't see me back there. The process that the Liquor Control Board follows when the license has come due and there's an objection by the city is they give them, I believe, is a two-month extension on their liquor license while they prepare the recommendation from the staff to the Liquor Control Board, which will then be acted upon. We've been in active conversation with the lieutenant that's in charge of reviewing materials. We've sent a binder down about like this with police reports and other background information on what had gone on. There's another, a number of other things going on. There's a zoning code violation that's being prepped up right now. There is a couple of charges that are being prepped up right now. We're working with the police department and our code enforcement folks. We're also in contact with the former owner of the property that has a deed of trust to the property. We're also trying to limit access to the back of the property where the roadway goes through to rent, from the road into behind rent and high school into home run and to limit access to the back parking lot because that's where an awful lot of the noise has occurred. We have twice gone into the neighborhood and spoken with the neighbors about their concerns and tried together some additional information, some of which went to the Liquor Control Board. There's, just, we're pursuing it on, well, let me back up. They're well behind on their utility bill. They came in just before their water was to be shut off last month, I think it was. They're pretty close to that point again this month. So, all of this is being pursued. In the meantime, they've apparently followed the advice of the Liquor Control Board and they've discontinued their relationship with their prior promoter who was causing most of the problems. And from what we can tell, the communications we've had, the calls for service have started to drop at that location. But that, we'll have to wait until all the information is accumulated. So, we're going at this on three or four different fronts right now.
That's good news, Mr. Taylor.
Yes, and one other thing too, Chief, I wanted to just mention this to put out here. We are all aware of quite a bit of news media attention that has been pointed at Ferguson, Missouri regarding the incident there and the policing and the militarization and all those things. And I'm aware of a number of discussions that have been going on locally. In fact, there is a meeting that's being convened by Sheriff, by Dave Updegrove and King County Councilmember Updegrove and Prosecutor, or excuse me, Sheriff Urquhart's going to be involved along with some other folks, I believe it's happening this week. I'm aware that today, there was a group of individuals who showed up at a King County Council meeting around 1:30 PM to express their opposition to the county training the sheriffs to do with the chokehold maneuver here at King County. And there's been a number of other things happening over the past couple of weeks. I'm just wondering, are we out in front doing any kind of community policing outreach that speaks to our community in a unique way to let them know what we are doing that operates in the best interest of our community in view of all of this information that they're seeing nationally?
I don't think we're doing anything specifically as a result of what's happened in Ferguson and Missouri. I do know we work with Preeti Shridhar, we work with Benita Horn. We are looking at the city through diversity issues and inclusion issues, but as what happened in Ferguson, we aren't doing anything specifically as a result of that. I think we have a pretty good relationship with our citizens. It's not that we can't improve upon that, but I think for some reasons with Ferguson, you kind of got to wait and see what happens. There's all sorts of different investigations going on and no one really knows what happened and we just kind of got to wait for the, to settle down and find exactly what happened and move forward.
We, I'll just add to that, we've, in the last month, we have been meeting with our cultural liaisons and one of the questions we've asked them specifically is, "Do you feel like you're getting good communication with the city? Do you feel in contact and do you have any concerns?" And in some cases, they've actually volunteered ahead of us asking that, that they feel that they're heard at City Hall and that they do have a place to go if they have concerns. As the chief said, not that we can't always improve upon that, but we are in the middle of updating our efforts with them and just getting a good status report. So, the timing in that sense has been pretty good in that this unfortunate incident in Missouri occurred as we were in the middle of scheduling meetings. So, it's given us an opportunity to talk with various ethnic groups and cultural groups and so, we're preparing a report back. We'll be back to you all probably late October, early November with the status report of, and we'll make sure that we include within that any feedback we get relative to that. I think that, you know, as the chief said, a lot will come out of the investigations that are happening in Ferguson, but a key part of that is, you know, how open are we in terms of our communication with our constituents? And I think the council receives a lot of the same emails that we do and I think by and large, people feel like they're respected when they come in contact with a police officer. They may be in violation of law or whatever else, but we really do try to train that our officers, that everybody is treated with dignity and respect regardless of their circumstance. And that, I think, is a key part of ensuring that you don't end up with people feeling that they're not valued in a community. And so, we, that's something that I know the chief and his staff, and frankly, both chiefs and their staff do in their emergency responses is above all, the people we come in contact with are, you know, they are members of this community and they need to be treated with respect and with dignity regardless of their circumstance or their ethnicity, their cultural background or whatever else. And so, I think in that sense, we are at least moving in the right direction. Again, not that we can't always improve upon where we are.
And what I would add to that, Jay, and there's aren't any, you know, we don't have any, you know, incidents that I know of that I'm aware of here in our city that speaks to what's happened in Ferguson. But I am aware of a number of various research documents, one being recently released by the Pew Research Organization. Gallup's got some information now, but there's a number of reports that are pointing to perceptions of policing quite a bit. And I would hope that we're looking at some of that information and understanding that, you know, we're a microcosm of a macrocosm and that, you know, we're not devoid of people having those kinds of notions, especially when they're being inundated daily on all the mediums. So, we want to get out in front of that and tell our own story.
Right.
And that's where I'm coming from.
Very, very good. And I think there was an article in Today's Paper about the very thing, that even in a diversified department, you can have a culture that doesn't respect the constituents and that creates the same kind of distrust. And so, it's a critical thing and, yeah, I appreciate that. We, there's, as I said, there's always room for us to continue to improve and I appreciate what you said, Councilman, that we need to make sure that we're getting our story out as well.
I just want to say thank you to the bicycle cops that were at the farmer's market last Tuesday. They got off their bikes and walked around and so many people commented how much more accessible they seemed and people were constantly going up talking to them. So, just pass that on. When they get off their bikes and just walk, it makes them seem friendlier.
I will. That's community policing.
Yeah. Well, I just was standing on the other side watching and they, people just kept coming up to them. They didn't move very far. So, that's a good thing, that people feel they can go up and just communicate, just start talking with them.
Especially when I think our average height is about six-three, it feels like when we...
I know.
As we're all big, big, big people.
And I'd just like to add to that, a thank you to all the personnel in both departments and you're working really hard. Thank you for the reports tonight. Welcome.
Any other questions? Saying none, committee the whole is adjourned and we'll come back at 7:00 PM as a full council.